Let's have a word of prayer. Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your love and kindness and your tender mercy, oh God. Lord, we bless your name in this place, oh God. Cover us with your blood, oh God. Lord, make us one body, oh God. Lord, we thank you this afternoon. You've been so good and you've been so kind to us, oh God. We bless your name in this place, oh God. We lift you up in this place, oh God. We give you glory, oh God. Guide us, oh God. Lead us, oh God. Oh Lord, you cover each and every one of us, oh God. Cover our thoughts, oh God. Word out of mouth, oh God. Oh Lord, you give us the gift, oh God, of love among each other. And we thank you right now, Lord, for your love and kindness and your tender mercy. We bless your name today, God. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. On the call, this means your order. And the city clerk, will you please call the row?
Yes, sir. Mayor McClintock?
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson?
Here.
City Treasurer Frank Martin?
Here.
City, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilor Kat?
Here.
Councilor Kroom?
Here.
Councilor Harris?
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson? Councilor Mohammed?
Present.
Councilor Monday?
Here.
Councilor Murray? Councilor Pulliam?
Here.
Councilor Willis?
Look, I'm being present. I think, Ms. Mohammed, Ms. Harris, I think we all got caught up a little bit on the time.
I did.
Yeah.
I'm very, very sorry.
So, I did too. I was late too. So, pre-council on the first, council means that, the pre-council is at 12:30. And council means starting at 1:00.
I do remember that. I got, on my, on my job, I just got so busy and I lost track of the time.
I, I did too.
I do apologize.
I did too.
I did, I did. I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I had a client to take care of some.
Well, we have no bid openings in the corrections to the minutes.
Motion approved, as stated.
On favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. We had no old business, so, Ms. Pulliam?
Make motion, read R. 101 and 02 by Tyler.
Second.
On favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City, uh, City Council of West Memphis, Arkansas, certifying local government endorsement of Carvana LLC to participate in the tax-backed program as authorized by Section 15-4-2706D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003.
We have further here, if you want to speak on that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is, as you all know, a couple of weeks ago, we made an announcement about Carvana locating in, in our community in West Memphis. We're quite excited about that. They plan to invest forty, up to $45 million in site development and create up to 450 jobs. As part of the process, going through the competitive process of industrial recruitment, we have to apply certain incentives as part of, of, of the competition that we play as it relates to site selection from these particular industries. And this is one of those incentives that's authorized by the state of Arkansas through the act that I think is referenced in the title. And it's basically a rebate of sales and use tax for materials used for construction at the site. And so, it, it does a couple of things, is that it encourages acquisition, purchase of materials within the state of Arkansas or within areas that would be under the jurisdiction and subject to sales, state and local sales and use taxes. So, businesses within the state certainly benefit by, by this. The company benefits by receiving the rebate of those taxes that would be normally collected on those purchases. So, it's really a win-win. You're not giving anything away because if they weren't building the facility, you wouldn't be collecting those taxes anyway. So, you, you recently did one of these with Coca-Cola, a few, I think it was a couple of months ago. So, we've, we've done this in the past. It's, it's been standard operating procedure for what we do.
I'm sorry, did, did I understand you to, that you announced where the Carvana, where they're going to be located? I know.
In the industrial park, Mid-America Industrial Park?
Mid-America?
Yes.
And how many jobs, you say?
Uh, over the phase one, which I think is a ramp-up of three years. I'll have to go back and check the numbers precisely, but $450, or, excuse me, 450 jobs over a three-year ramp-up.
Over a three-year?
Yes.
And the, uh, the rate of pay?
Um, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Nineteen and...
Good shade under twenty.
Yeah, I think the, the average was, was slightly under $20.
And that's just common laborer? Is that...
Well, there'll be an assortment. There will be general labor maintenance. There will be technicians. There will be management. There will be...
But this is going to be about the, the base pay for just the...
Well, that's the average. That's the average number that they gave us for the jobs that would be produced here. So, I'm sure that, within that range, it may, may range from, you know, fourteen, thirteen to fourteen to, you know, twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five.
Right, right. I just want, I just want the public to know, so if someone goes to get a job just for janitorial work, they wouldn't be expecting to get a pay of $20 per hour because when you say $20, you, you know, that's just a, a standard number. But when you say between fourteen and twenty, that sounds a lot better.
Yes, and that, and that, and that's because the state needs those, those numbers in, in determining what incentives they provide. It's really based on the total payroll that they would generate based off 450 jobs at average of $20 per hour, a minimum payroll amount of certain things, so.
Right, because there are people out there and we always get a, a misunderstanding about what is being said, but just for clarity's sake, I just wanted everyone to know that when you go in and apply for this job and you don't have those particular skills for that particular job, you will not be generating $20 per hour. It could be somewhat less. That's what I'm trying to get clear.
Yes, it could be. No, every, that's not a minimum number. That's an average number.
An average number.
And, and there will be plenty of opportunity for local people to apply for these jobs. So, at this point in time, we don't have a lot of information. The project scheduled for completion in mid to late summer of 2020. And so, I'm, would think by spring, they will start some type of hiring locally to start filling those positions.
Thank you so much. Just wanted, for clarity's sake, thank you.
It's also a $40 million investment within our community, too.
$40 million investment.
Philip, this is not directly involved with the labor and the, and the wages, but we are doing a lot of, uh, building, I guess you'd say, in West Memphis. And we're moving forward with the four municipal buildings. The library's in business. And I know Carvana, they have their own construction firm and they have their own probably architect or whatever. But anytime the city has a handle on some of this construction that's going on, I would suggest that we use as many local contractors and subcontractors as we can here locally rather than, you know, go outside of West Memphis or Creighton County and find somebody. So, if you just put a bug in, you know, some of these ears around here that are doing all this improvement, then let's see if we can keep our people busy.
And that, and that's a good point. We, and we do encourage these companies when they come in here and they, they usually want to try and utilize local contractors and, and suppliers as much as possible. Obviously, it comes down to dollars and cents most of the time. But we have been in contact with the chamber to provide information to them about what's going on out there. There will be various disciplines of work that will carry forward. There will be other opportunities for people to do this work. But I think if you go out there at the site now, you'll see probably thirty pieces of construction equipment on the site. And the vast majority of those are local contractors.
Right.
So, there, there, there will be a local economic impact to local business and industry here.
Like the, the, the one example, I guess, would be the library. I understand the library, the contractor is a Tennessee-based contractor that got the bid for the library. And he's using a plumbing firm out of Jonesboro rather than here locally. And that, I, I know we got some qualified people right here that can do that.
You know, you can't, you can't control that. You can only, you can only ask and encourage. And, you know, we don't have any way, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, but I don't think we have any way to, to force someone in the free market to utilize. But we obviously want to make sure that our, our local businesses have that opportunity and, and, and we're certainly conscious of that and, and try to do everything that we can to spend, send as much of it their way as, as we can.
Good deal. Thank you, Philip.
Thank, no, let me, let me get a motion in a second. Real quick. Get a motion.
Second.
In the further discussion. All in here now, on favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Ms. City Clerk, will you get that a resolution, a number?
That resolution number will be 2209.
City Attorney?
01.
Authorizing ordinance of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, for the municipal capital buildings project. 02 is an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for decorations to be used in Worthington Park, Martin Luther King Park, and Ride and Big River Crossing Trailhead, approving a contract between the City of West Memphis and Festive Designs, comma, Inc., declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion in a second? The further spending rules. On favor of I?
Aye.
What are we talking about? Ordinance 02?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim Jackson?
We, we, let's, let's get there and we get there. On favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for decorations to be used in Worthington Park, Martin Luther King Park and Ride, and Big River Crossing Trailhead, approving a contract between the City of West Memphis and Festive Designs, Inc., declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Make a motion and put it on the second reading.
On favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for decorations to be used in Worthington Park, Martin Luther King Park and Ride, and Big River Crossing Trailhead, approving a contract between the City of West Memphis and Festive Designs, Inc., declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Now, what the third reading?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, Mr. Jim Jackson, will you come forward, please?
Jim, could you get, kind of give us a briefing on what we're talking about here so that the citizens of West Memphis will understand?
Yes, sir. We're talking about decorations primarily for Worthington Park with the forty-foot live tree and decorations there, twenty-foot live tree and decorations at Martin Luther King Park and Ride, and some decorations across from Poncho's at the Big River Crossing Trailhead. We've used this company for years, seven years that I know of, and before that. Local company, local slash Memphis company. The gentleman is from West Memphis and has done this for many years. I have presented this to A and P Commission. They've agreed to fund this project as they have in the past. And we will have other decorations around, too, that aren't part of this contract, but we'll have the street banners and the, uh, snowflakes on Missouri Street. And we'll do what we, what we do. I've got one little extra thing I'm working on for the tree lighting ceremony, which will be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. I think this year it's the November 26th at Worthington Park.
Well, I'm glad we're using a local person to do this.
For this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Randy Hill owns Festive Design, is from West Memphis. I think his brother still lives here. And we, we, we've worked with him very closely in the past. Does a good job for us. Only issue, and it's really, I have to stay on him, but it's not his, his fault sometimes getting the tree down after, if we have a lot of snow or rain and it's wet because it's a bucket truck involved. And, and obviously, I can't do any of this without the utility guys to, to assist. Randy has his own bucket truck, but we also have to use those guys to get some power to the different locations.
Thank you, Jim.
May I get a motion in a second to approve?
So moved.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, on favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Can you get 02, uh, ordinance number?
Yes, Mayor. The ordinance number will be 2521.
Oh, so, can I get a motion in a second to approve the emergency clause? That's paragraph three?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
On favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? Before we go further, can the record reflect that Councilwoman Hutchinson has made to me? Permission request, uh, planning commission recommendation? Let me get a motion in a second to approve, though.
So moved.
Second.
All right, that'll be, on favor of I? We'll refer those back. Also, I need a motion in a second to approve Councilman Kroom's recommendation?
Willis. Willis. It's Willis.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Councilman Willis, uh... Say, this, this to add it to the agenda. Take a second.
Second.
On favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh, Councilman Willis, want to give his, uh, his contribution fund to the Hope of the Delta, eleven hundred and one dollars and twenty cents? On favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Committee reports, uh, budget?
Yes, the Budget Committee met on 9/26 and their recommendation to the council. The original budget that you approved back in January was, there was $150,000 in the 911 fund that would be transferred out to the general fund with sales revenues, not sales revenues, but revenues in general exceeding expectations up to this point of the year. Spending is in check. It's within balances that, that are there at sixty-two, sixty-six percent. It's really no concern with the general fund not needing that 150. The department needs to remodel that facility. They're getting bids now, not close to how much they're going to need on that, if they're going to need the whole 150 or just a portion of it.
They didn't think so.
So, but we were going to ask that the council not make that transfer at this time. As we get close to the end of the year, we may come back and ask you to transfer a different amount. Other option, other item we looked at was the water tower on Broadway. Has an electrical problem. It's $1,200. Well, it's actually 1,101, I think. And we simply want to get that electrical issue fixed so the entire tower does light up. It was not part of the original budget. We'll just take it from reserves and take care of that. Committee's in a somewhat of a neutral position on the $100,000 for the Revertia Jackson Neighborhood Center. We want to wait and find out what the interpretation is going to be with the bond language as to how and what monies can be spent for what purposes. So, we're just letting that sit right now until the committee comes back and advises us a little bit more on, on what you want to do. But those were the three items that, of action that were taken that we're asking your permission to go ahead and approve.
Motion second?
Second.
On favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes?
One other thing I'd like to ask the Budget Chairman here. I mean, when do we, when does our next budget meet?
Fourth Thursday in October. And then we'll meet again the fourth Thursday in November. October, we'll be talking more the general expenditures. We kind of addressed on the revenue at our last meeting. May go back in and get into revenue a little bit more detail. We took it in a very broad spectrum, Tom. The revenue or the sales tax collections from Southland, in your spreadsheet, I handed out to you earlier, for the month is $269,779.05 more than last year. For the year, it's $789,571.74. And the budget year today is $694,121.28 more than the original budget. Of course, the last two months, the excess funds will be moved over to a, not a restricted account, but a separate account, to fund the depreciation account that you wanted to set up and also go ahead and start building some reserves towards your building projects that you want to undertake later this year and, and next year. The sales tax revenues for August was $56,362 more than the previous this time last year. And it's $59,488.72 over budget projections. Again, committee felt very comfortable with not transferring that 150 at this time. When you look at the overall revenues for the city, this is through August. Sixty-six percent was our magic number. Revenues came in at 64.61. Expenses came in at 62.72 percent. Still well in line with the original projections and feel comfortable where we are right now.
That concludes?
Yes, sir, it does.
You know, I cannot pass up the chance, Councilman Kroom, on the Wayne Crown Water Tower?
I'm just glad it was $1,200 instead of $12,000.
Well, I'm just glad that, uh, the original estimate for that electrical problem was $1,200 instead of $12,000.
We're going to go back down to public work. Councilwoman Mohammed?
Right, we did have a, a brief meeting. Our city engineer was not present at the time. Business was conducted as usual. Ms. Standwich did a wonderful job. Unfortunately, I do not have a, a report in front of me, but business is continuing on as usual. Everything is on track as it should be. We did introduce our new code enforcement officer, who is Mr. George Phillips. He isn't here today, but he gave a, a thorough report and things are really beginning to shape up. I think he's going to do a great job and we welcome him to the City of West Memphis. But he's not a stranger. He's been a police officer here the years passed. So, hopefully next week, Ms. Amanda will have a, a better report. But everything went really well. Thank you so much, that is.
Mr. Philip made a, already made an impact in the city.
He has.
Yeah.
Could, could we have Todd to come up and explain?
Yeah, on, on the announcement, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, on the call.
Okay.
Well, I can come up for us. We do it with the utility, this rather. I knew you got A and P.
Well, we didn't have any report on utility. But I was just trying to kick it in on, piggyback on the public work.
Okay, what was that for?
You know, we talking about the, the caving in.
The manholes, right. We talked a lot about that and, and it was said that that's on the utility department. So, I guess that's why he's asking Ms. Bret Hart to come up. I have no problems with it.
Good afternoon. Now, manholes, I'm not sure about, but...
Not, we, where they saying manhole, but still referring to...
Okay, the sinkholes. All right. Just to let you know, the three or four, the four major sinkholes we have within our city are located at West Walnut. We have one at Woods and Jefferson. We have one at Seventh and Jefferson, Winchell and Jefferson. Starting Monday, we are starting at West Walnut and fixing that repair. Then, once we go from that one, we will then transition over to the Woods and Jefferson. That one, we're waiting because we're going to have to relocate some of the utili, our current utilities. Like, we're going to have to relocate the distribution lines that are located directly over it. Plus, we might have to relocate our water lines and actually cut it out of place and remove it and take it out of service because of the area. So, we have went and gotten all the bids. We were, y'all forwarded them to commission. They've been signed. We've given them the notice to proceed and they are starting Monday at West Walnut. The water's finally receded for us so where we can actually dig deep and get to this stuff. There will be a social media post, hopefully this afternoon. If not this afternoon, it will be in the morning. Also, the West Walnut residents, those in that area, are going to get a flyer explaining that they'll be in that area on Monday working also.
Another quick question, okay? Like the, um, Woods Street, that of course, you know, you have, with, with the, you was talking about relocating lines. Would that interfere or interrupt the service in those areas?
When we relocate those services, we will not interrupt any of the services during that time. We, we're going to have to relocate them in the fact that we're going to literally probably have to cut the line, cut it, put a valve on it, cut on either side so where then they can go and we can isolate that area. But there will be services still continuing to all the residents and customers and commercial customers in that area.
Question. I heard you say, now, who's first?
West Walnut.
Next.
Then we're going to Woods and Jefferson. And then we'll probably go to, um, the Seventh Street in Jefferson and then we'll come back to Winchell and get it.
Winchell go be led?
Yeah, we're going to get the Winchell last. And the reason the, we're jumping on the West Walnut first is because it's a, a little bit easier fixed. We might pull the, uh, Winchell in second. We'll just have to see. The, the Woods and Jefferson is going to be the longest country.
Hold that thought right there. Mayor, may I ask that we go into recess and then we'll re-adjourn after the public hearing?
Motion.
Make a motion.
Second. Recession.
Why are we going into recess?
The public hearing is at 1:30 on the agenda.
Oh, I see. Here it is. Thank you so much.
Two seconds.
Then we're going to reconvene.
Do the two of our lead?
No, we're going to reconvene.
Move right back. Stay right there. Who was the second? Who made the second?
Not you.
Okay.
Thank you.
On favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? We're recessed.
Make a motion, reconvene.
Yeah. Second. On favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, we reconvene the City Council.
All right. I guess I start my thought where it was. All right, we, we are, we're going to start at West Walnut. They're going to be at West Walnut, working in that area, but they're going to be getting prepared to work at the Woods and Jefferson. And the reason we want to do the Woods and Jefferson next is again, because we had a long rain period at the beginning. We're pushed up to getting, November's typically our wettest month. I hope it's not. But typically, weather-wise, November is one of our wetter months. And we would like to get over that Woods and Jefferson area and get that area done before we start getting the rains again of fall and winter. And then we'll move on to the others, okay?
I just had a few people that want to tell something that area.
Yeah. Trust me, I, I completely understand and we're ready for it to get fixed. And I, I, I don't like the sinkholes all over either because they, every time I drive by them, I see them too. Anything else?
Ms. Mohammed, that concludes public work?
Yes, it does.
A and P, can I report?
Yeah, passed out everybody, come up with a report from A and P.
We give reports in here.
For, 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 for the public.
Right. The public doesn't know anything about what you passing out.
I have no appointments right now, uh, I have a couple presentations, uh, I guess I'm gonna start, um...
Councilwoman, Madam Hudson, will you talk forward, please? This presentation is going to, uh, yeah, ma'am, by the name of Councilman Willis Monday.
Ms. Monday, we, I, you know, I don't know what to say. I, I really honestly, this was going to be a presentation to you, we had planned it last council. Um, I asked the mayor to put off, who did I talk to yesterday? Is this on TV? Boy, anyway.
Yeah, fifteen minutes of fact.
I don't need it, trust me, I don't. Ms. Monday is, um, a gentleman of his word. We just, we wanted to give this to you on last council, but we wanted to wait. But, um, because I don't have my words together, we wanted to just tell you, thank you for just being a man of your word. In past council, you, you were so much to the people that you represent. I learned so much from you. And I think your constituents can honestly say that they can depend on you. When you say you're gonna do it, you do it, and that means a lot. A man is not measured, I don't think, by titles and degrees and, but a man is measured by his word. And, and you are a man of your word and you just, you've been great to a lot of people. So, I, I'm just off the cuff saying this because your, your mayor wanted to do it today. But, um, thank you just for being you to the people of West Memphis and to all of your, uh, co-council, we just thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
And here's your plate. Thank you.
All right, well, we're gonna be a little more organized on this one, uh, I'm gonna ask Assistant Chief, uh, Robert Langston, will you come forward, please? Also, you can read and honor our Officer Char Strauss, will you please come forward?
So, when Chief Wes took over the first year, he, he wants to develop some crime fighting and, and community outreach initiatives. Part of that, a couple, about four months ago, we did a shift of the month, which we simply rewarded a patrol shift for what they did each month, fighting crime and, and getting out, reaching out to the public. Officer Strauss's shift has won that for two of those four months and he's been the standout on that shift. So, for that, he got our September Officer of the Month.
In my last proclamation I have, it's, uh, I'm gonna ask Councilman Wayne Croon, you come forward, present this moment. This is going out to ASU Mid-South for that Manufacturing Day. Anyone here from ASU Mid-South, you please come forward.
I have the honor of reading this proclamation and it, uh, states that the City of West Memphis proclamation by the Honorable Marco McLendon, whereas National Manufacturing Day is a celebration of modern manufacturing meant to inspire the next generation of manufacturers officially occurring annually on the first Friday in the month of October and whereas Manufacturing Day, an annual national event recognized in the communities across the country, is supported by thousands of manufacturers as they host students, teachers, parents, and community members at open houses, plant tours, and more to showcase modern manufacturing technology and careers. And whereas manufacturing accounts for approximately one-third of the US GDP, which is the gross domestic product, contributing two-point-three-eight trillion dollars to the US economy and has the highest multiplier effect of all major sectors. For every dollar spent in manufacturing, another one point, uh, one dollar and eighty-two cents is added to the economy. And for every job created in manufacturing, four additional new jobs are created to the broader economy. Whereas manufacturing employees project a skilled work shortage of four-point-six million by two thousand and twenty-five, presenting an opportunity for more people to enter high-paying careers if connected with the right training and whereas economic growth depends on the education and training opportunities and aligned with manufacturers' skilled labor needs. And whereas partnerships between manufacturing and educational institutions at all levels are essential in preparing students for careers in manufacturing and increasing awareness of the opportunities, the creativity, the innovation, and the accomplishments that are obtained in today's high-tech, high-touch manufacturing work environments. Whereas our co- communities, manufacturing companies are vital, important to the economy prosperity of the city of West Memphis with two thousand one hundred and ten manufacturing employees represented in eight local major employers. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of West Memphis, do hereby proclaim October the fourth, two thousand nineteen as Manufacturing Day and the month of October, two thousand nineteen, is Manufacturing Month and encourage every student and every citizen of West Memphis to participate in Manufacturing Day and Manufacturing Month activities hosted by Arkansas State University Mid-South and area manufacturing employers to increase understanding of the in, interest of, uh, manufacturing as a career.
Yes, we're hosting the college on October twenty-fourth of this month. Um, Manufacturing Day activities, we're inviting the general public. We've got several area manufacturing employers who will be participating and raising awareness about the career opportunities in the manufacturing industry generally. Um, to anybody who wants to come and join us, we'll be having students come from the high schools. We'll have our own college students there participating. We've got, uh, the American Welding Society Mobile Exhibit coming. It features virtual welders as well as a virtual welding competition. There will be giveaways, there will be prizes, as well as a welding scholarship that will be available to the winner of that virtual welding competition. So, I encourage everyone to come out, it'll be nine to two PM on October twenty-fourth. Communities welcome, we'll have food trucks, free pizza, and manufacturing employers, and we'll be there as well. So, hope to see everyone there, thank you.
Excuse me, what time you say it's going to be on twenty-fourth?
Nine to two, October twenty-fourth.
About a few announcements, uh, first of all, let me recognize, uh, Ms. Marie Head for turning City Hall pink. If you saw decorations on the microphones and as well as on the windows and honor President Councilman, uh, October. So, just wanna recognize her for that. Uh, Jim Jackson, the Left Bank Fact, uh, Left, Left Bank Festival, will you come forward? Okay, go ahead, Councilman, hold for me today.
I wanted to, uh, thank Ms. Butler for all her effort in the, uh, the, uh, night out. Maybe we put on a good night out, one of the best I've been to and it was really, really nice. And she did an excellent job. Thanks to her and the chief and all the rest of the people, we, she did a wonderful job and I want to tell her thank you.
Councilman Monday, I truly believe that, uh, Ms. Butler gonna be doing a lot more and she highly...
She slipped outside.
As you said. And also, let me add this before you two. Last Friday was the greatest football game I think I ever seen between Wes Smiths and Marion. Proud to sell my Blue Devils, so we poured it out.
All right, I was just gonna tell you about a couple of things coming up. And one is this Saturday, it's the Left Bank Festival out at the Big River Crossing. And this year, they're going to honor Mr. Willie Mitchell, uh, and, um, who was from West Memphis, was a musician and kind of started the, what they call the Memphis Sound, but what we like to call the West Memphis Sound. He was a trumpet player and, uh, his son, Boo Mitchell, uh, is still running the, uh, recording studio over in Memphis. And, uh, the High Rhythm Section that played with him, uh, back in the seventies, sixties and seventies and backed up folks like Al Green and Ann Peebles and, uh, Don Bryant. And, uh, so, we're gonna have, uh, the High Rhythm Section, uh, this is actually an ASU Mid-South project. A and P's helping out, uh, with it. Uh, they're gonna have the High Rhythm Section out there at four. Uh, I don't know if Ann Peebles is gonna make it or not, I think she's under the weather, but her husband, Don Bryant's gonna be there, Willie Cobb's gonna be there and, um, and, uh, Barbara, oh, there, hey, thank you, Nick. And, uh, yeah, and Albert King Jr.'s gonna be there at eleven, uh, Kenny Brown's gonna be there at one-thirty. They're gonna have a, uh, I, I do have a challenge for Mr. Monday, they're gonna have a catfish cooking contest. And, uh, Mr. Monday said he's gonna win that thing flat out, so, uh, uh, but if anybody wants to come out and challenge him on cooking some fish, uh, they're gonna have that, uh, sometime during the day, I'm not exactly sure when. But they're gonna have a run, catfish contest, arts, crafts, food, music, uh, should be a good time. Uh, Mayor's gonna, uh, give a, uh, an honor to Boo Mitchell, uh, for his, the contribution of his dad and High Rhythm Section. So, it's a great thing. Uh, the Left Bank Festival is turning into more of a music fest and that area is being used for exactly what we wanted it to be used for when the city, the A and P, has funded these prod, the whole project from the beginning. I will tell you that, uh, that's this weekend. The last weekend of the month is the Peer Power Half Marathon out there. The Sunday, uh, which is, uh, time, daylight savings time, does it begin or end that day? I don't remember which one, but they're gonna have a grit and grind gravel ride, ride, uh, race on, um, Decker's Lake Road, which is gonna be a nice event, so a lot of views going on out there. While I've got the microphone, I gotta go a little bit more if you don't mind, Mayor. I got, uh, great steak cook-off coming up, October nineteenth, over here at the Civic Center, the outside in the parking lot. Uh, we've got several teams, lots of teams already, uh, lined up. Um, this will be the ninth annual, Southland's been doing it for the last eight years. Because of the construction, they asked the city to take it over, uh, we're gonna do that. Got some good music over there, I've got the Elmo and the Shades, I've got, uh, Rockabilly Hall of Famer, um, Landon Lang and, um, the Memphis Mojo Kings, I think is the name of the band. Man, Nick, you're on it, man. Uh, he's helping me out again up here, but, uh, so, I challenge folks to come over and cook a steak. You win fifteen hundred dollars first prize, uh, and we're gonna give prizes from first through tenth place. That'll be a good time, basically from twelve to six on Saturday, nineteenth. Uh, one more thing, the West Memphis Band Boosters and they're gonna have the West Memphis Marching Classic on October twelfth, out at the football field here. They're gonna have, uh, marching bands representing the tri-state region, should have about a thousand people out there. I came by there last year not knowing what was going on, you couldn't move with the school buses and the folks moving around. So, if you into marching bands and all that, that's going on all day, uh, October twelfth at the, uh, at the high school. I do want to say one more thing. Mr. Cat, appreciate your numbers for tax collection, but looking at A and P numbers, August was the biggest month we've ever had. It was a record month. So, there is a lot of things, a lot of positive things going on in West Memphis.
Can you say when it's three?
When did you say the catfish cook-off was gonna be?
Where?
When?
Uh, I think it starts at, um, I'll get you a flyer.
Okay. Okay, all right.
The West Memphis Health Fair will be held October, October thirty-first at the Eugene Woods Civic Center, I'm sorry, from eleven-thirty to two o'clock. Again, the, um, Health Fair, we're encouraging citizens and all to come and be a part of that. Again, October thirty-first from eleven-thirty, uh, until two. And, and one, one other thing, you all, I, I looked last night, I want to share this. I, uh, the night out was awesome. We can go on YouTube, thanks for our communications where we can go and look. But if, real quickly, if you've ever, any of you've ever experienced, I'm sure at some point some of us have, um, staying, spending a night in a hospital with a person, not, you not the patient, but you're just spending the night over. Normally, hospitals are pretty quiet around eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, you want to be quiet for the patients and, um, such as, that's been my experience this last week. I was looking on YouTube last night around eleven o'clock in, in the hospital, in a room and I saw John and his wife, and when I tell you they was boogying down, I mean, they were cutting a rug and I hollered, John, so thank, I needed that laugh, I wanted to tell you, I needed that laugh and I said, oh, and I, my mom jumped and I was like, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. But you really was boogying down, so if, if I can learn to dance like that, I think I can just live off a lot of, um, a lot of stress. So, I just want you to know, you got it, you really got it, you got it in you.
I think he was warming up for his, uh, Sunday morning service.
Ma, okay, well, that's what it was, you, you was getting down with it, John, so thank you, thank you for that laugh.
I said, back just warm up.
I was, I was on a serious note, uh, Councilwoman Hudson, just want to let you know, we praying for your mother and all, and all women that, and, and millions who may be dealing with cancer in any form, know they, uh, they have our prayers. Yeah, any, any other announcements?
I just want to remind everyone, the, uh, Council Park's committee meeting, by the Council meetings all.
Go in the room and hear it.
We have no citizen requests, uh, can I get a motion and second? Second? All in pay by?